Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting. Select Board, sorry. Tonight is Tuesday, June 4th, 2024. This meeting hearing of the AIR Select Board will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and/or participation via Zoom is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in a specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. This meeting will be live on Zoom and Channel 8. The public may access the proceedings by joining Zoom, meeting ID number 897-908-0793, or by calling 929-205-6099. For additional information about remote participation, please contact Carley Antonellis, Assistant Town Manager at atm@air.ma.us, or 978-772-8220, extension 100, prior to the meeting. If I could ask everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any amendments to the agenda tonight?
I have none.
I have none.
Make a motion that the board approve the agenda as presented.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Any announcements tonight?
If I could just make a statement, I just want to take the second acknowledge and wish every member of the LGBTQIA+ community in our residence, their family and friends, a happy Pride Month.
Happy Pride. Okay, anything else? Okay. All right. So if I can ask everyone to join me in a moment of silence in memory and honor of Mr. Dennis Callahan Jr., who passed away on May 27th, 2024. Dennis was a true public servant and friend of the Town of AIR. He served as the elected town treasurer from 2001 to 2010, and served on the Board of Assessors from 2001 to 2019. Our thoughts and prayers are with his family and friends. Please observe a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Okay, does anyone have any public input tonight? All right. Moving on. Yep, oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Pauline. You, I looked away just as you raised your hand.
That's perfectly okay. I have two questions for later in the meeting. I can ask them now and you can address them then, or I can wait. You choose.
Go ahead and ask them.
Okay, one question pertains to the quit claim. There's no mention in the quit claim about the 21E assessment, and I'm curious what the status of that is. So when we get there, if you could just, if someone could just explain, that'd be great. The other question pertains to the tie-in bond transfer station study. The study references an operations proposal or something along that lines, which was attached as an addendum, but it was not in the packet.
I looked at the packet, and I believe you had everything that I had seen the other day, but we'll address that when we get to it.
Okay, there is a, there is an operations proposal from Dan dated January, but the tie-in bond report specifically refers to one they prepared.
Yeah, I didn't see that last week in the rate review.
Yeah.
What you, what you're seeing in the packet is what I saw last week in the rate review. So, but again, we'll, we'll look into that.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. And with that, Robert, approval of the quit claim deed for Sandy, 71 Sandy Pond Road.
Madam Chair, members of the board, good evening. So you have in your packet the quit claim deed for the acquisition by purchase of 71 Sandy Pond Road in the amount of $700,000, as the board is aware, $350,000 from CPC and $350,000 from ARPA. The quit claim, quit claim deed was written by attorney Katie Klein of Town Council, has been reviewed and is true to form. The seller, seller has also agreed, as his attorney has as well. To Pauline's question, if you look, I forget which section in the purchase and sale, one of the requirements is a environmental transaction screen of, of the property. That was, and through you, Madam Chair, I did send, maybe she did not get it yet, I did send Pauline an email on this. If you, the board will recall on Slide 4 of the presentation on Article 24, which Dan presented at town meeting, it had reference to the actual environmental transaction screen, which was completed by Cooperstown Environmental on March 18th. That was all posted to the website in advance of town meeting. The environmental screening did not find any hazardous materials. It, it's clean on that front. The title search has been completed, it's clean on that front. Also, we did do an appraisal as well, so all of the, all of the boxes are, are in order. So with that, we'd be looking for the board, if there's any questions, we'd be looking for the board to vote to approve and sign the quit claim deed by signature by the board. And then upon that, Town Council will, and myself, will complete the, the closing of the, and we anticipate the transaction to be completed either June, either June 18th or June 20th, which is within the 60 days from town meeting.
Okay, any questions?
I don't have any.
This is exciting.
I'll make a motion that the board approve and sign the quit claim deed as presented in our packet.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Congratulations.
Yay. Nice moving forward on this.
I know. I'm, this is gonna be fun to watch the process and to see how this all lays out with, with public input for anybody. Okay. All right. And I believe if there's nothing else on that, we can move to your town manager's report.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening to the, to the board. You have in your packet the town warrants that were reviewed and approved since the board last met on May 21st. In terms of the administrative update for this evening, just a few things. We're, as we always are this time of year, and are in the process of closing out FY24 and getting ready to start FY25 on July 1st in terms of the budget. Also looking forward to completing or starting the new round of capital projects for the town, so a lot of focus has been on that. On June 18th, your next meeting, the nurses from the Neshoba Valley Medical Center would like to briefly come to just update the board just on their concerns regarding the Steward Hospital. They know that the board and the town is supportive, but they, they've asked to come briefly to that, that meeting. The board, you know, so they held a press conference yesterday down in Depot Square. We sort of found out, sort of last minute, they did get some good coverage just about the importance of the hospital moving forward. Related to that, when I met with them today, just for the board's benefit, as the board's aware, Steward has filed for Chapter 11 bankruptcy out of Texas. That actually happened yesterday, they filed for it. The town is listed as a debtor on the Chapter 11 schedule. Town Council is currently reviewing the Chapter 11, as well as will advise on what we need to do further to protect our interests. There are some small outstanding payments owed to the town, and then there's some water and sewer that's owed to the town, that we want to make sure that our interests are protected on that. Related to that, the bids are due June 26th. For anybody bidding on the hospitals, there's nine of them, of which Neshoba is one of them, and the auction is scheduled, and this is over, ultimately overseen by the court, on July 11th.
That's quick.
So unfortunately, yeah. The frustrating piece, I think for everybody, town is, has just been a big cone of silence from Steward and on the state side too. In other words, there's not a lot of information which allows, then with the media and speculation and so forth. I can understand everybody that works up there, you know, being on, on edge, but I think the key thing that the town, that this board and the town has continued to assert is the importance of the hospital continuing under whoever that ownership will be, but we don't have any idea yet on that. So we'll continue to keep the board updated on June 18th. They just want to briefly come at the beginning of the meeting, just to address the board, just a reaffirmation of their support. Also on June 18th, the president of the IC Federal Credit Union out of Pittsburgh would be coming with Alicia to make a donation to the board, to the town's emergency fund, so that'll be a positive thing that we're looking forward to. The 18th's gonna be busy. Also on June 18th, on June 18th, the Senior Center Site Selection Committee, which is zeroing in on its potential recommendations, not quite there yet, would like to come to briefly give an update to the board as per your charge they're required to do. They're at a position, they just want to give a, a brief update to the board as to where they're at in the process and any questions you may have. Lastly, Selectman Livingston had asked me about, on the ARPA funds, so we, we have approximately $66,000 remaining in the ARPA. We are just checking on one of the DPW projects that was authorized, it was up to $350,000. Dan may not need all of that, so the $66,000 might go up a little bit.
We can't give this stuff.
Yeah, so what I'm proposing is, for the 18th, I'll, I'll prepare this. One is, we'll have the definitive accounting, and two, I was gonna ask, and you had asked this too, Selectman Copeland, I'm gonna ask all of the departments for any suggestions, and then when I come back to the board, we'll have that discussion on, on the 18th.
So whoever has their name up, I can't, hand up, I can't see your name.
Ken Discan.
Oh. Hi, Ken.
Sorry. I didn't realize you were gonna get to the deed so quickly, and I had a little trouble getting on. Anyway, the long and the short of it is on the deed, there's a typo way in the back of the deed, on the signing page, that refers to the town of Montague.
I already found it and corrected it.
Okay, it's been corrected, thank you. It wasn't corrected for the packet, but it's corrected for the one we signed.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
So we can, I have a discussion and hopefully conclude the plan for ARPA. We're almost there. So.
It's a great problem to have, though. I mean, every time we think, you know, hey, you know, and then it's like, nope, we got more, and like, wow, but it's a great problem to have.
So unless there's any questions from the Select Board, that's sort of my administrative update for this evening, and then I just have a couple of action items. So the first, as, under appointments, the first is, I'm respectfully recommending that the Select Board appoint Mr. Jim Pernard of AIR to the Senior Center Site Selection and Building Committee to fill a vacancy. Mr. Pernard contacted the town manager's office, expressing his interest in serving on this important committee, and as the board is aware, we did advertise that vacancy, actually more than two weeks, and he was, he was the only, the only applicant, so we're recommending his appointment to that committee.
I have no issues. Any questions?
Nope. I'll make a motion that the board appoint Mr. Jim Pernard to the AIR Senior Center Site Selection and Building Committee.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Congratulations, Jimmy.
And then next item three, as we've done in previous years, and I want to thank Ms. Antonellis for all of the legwork on this and putting this together. We do sort of appointments and reappointments, Part 1 and Part 2 for both June meetings. So you have in your packet what we'll call appointments and annual appointments, Part 1, and respectfully requesting that the individuals listed in the memo be reappointed by the Select Board, and you have the board and committee the length of the term and the current member.
I have no concerns about any of these reappointments.
Neither do I. And Carley, can you just remind me, we can do it as presented for everybody at one time?
Yep. Yeah, and then you'll just notice too, I just want to point out, on the senior, or the Council on Aging Board, somewhere along the line there, sequence got messed up, so like, three people are up at once, and then two people are up at once.
Yeah.
So we talked with Town Council, so Bob Gardner's term will do a two-year appointment, and then after that two-year appointment, he'll go, he'll be eligible for the three. You'll see some, next meeting with the zoning board of appeals, same issue. Like, they, they got out of whack, and it was three years, and then all at two years, so that's how they recommended to fix it.
I'll make a motion that the board approve the, the reappointments to different councils as presented in the packet.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And chair says aye. Congratulations to everyone on their reappointments.
And thank you.
And then number four, it's that time of year, as we're coming to the end of the fiscal year and onto the new fiscal year for FY25, as we've done in the past, I put on the agenda sort of a, a brief initial discussion on the FY25 goals and objectives, and as we've discussed.
You skipped, we, you skipped. We're, we gotta do our appointments.
Oh, no, that's down below. Under the reorg.
No, no.
Oh, wait, yeah.
No. Appointments, reappointments, Select Board Committee Board assignments.
Oh, I had it as part of the reorganization of the Select Board.
Oh. I had it as part of, under Town Manager Report with the rest of the appointments.
Okay.
And that's why it fell in the packet, so, whatever.
Whatever the, whatever the chair's pleasure.
Well, since we're there. Do you want to go ahead and do the, because it's, it lines up in the packet, and that's how I, I just kind of flowed there.
Okay, so.
Sorry.
You have in your packet a memo for the Select Board Committee and, and Board Assignments, and just for the public's benefit, and a new member, the Select Board each year, you determine your representatives to the various committees that have a Select Board seat. So I put in the memo the list of the applicable committees, and it shows the current, the current person in each of those. So whatever the board decides, they're generally a one-year appointment, and you do it again next year. So there are some that, the ones that are vacant were previously held by former Selectman Scott Hood.
So I would like to stay on my committees, and the Stormwater Utility Working Group, that's pretty much gonna be winding up, because we're starting the public presentations and then go for the board, but I'd like to stay on my two. For your benefit, I, the By Board has been meeting, I don't, this, I'm just letting them know the date, okay? I don't want anybody thinking, I'm like, you're doing it. So that's the meeting with the FinCom rep and the town treasurer and accountant and whatnot. They have been, have been meeting monthly on Thursdays at 2:00. So, you know, of course, that would be with the committee, whoever's on it to work out, but that's the way they have been meeting. And quick question, were the 14 March 2024 meeting minutes approved, because they were never posted?
March what, 14th?
Yeah.
Was that the last time they met?
No, April was the last time they met, and it was on the agenda, so I'm just, I'm just wondering, so. And then capital is normally November to December, sometimes January. It has been meeting on Thursdays at 5:00. Again, you'd work, whoever's on it will work with the committee if there's, needs to be something rescheduled. And then the Devon's Resolution Committee, that's our local committee, not to be confused with the Devon's Jurisdictional Framework Committee that I'm on, that is finally on a regular schedule. The Devon's Jurisdictional meets at, on the second Wednesday at 3:00 in here, and now the Devon's Resolution Committee meets on the second Wednesday every month at 5:30 PM in here. And that's to, again, for your benefit, just to kind of look over all the pros and cons as to how it would impact the Town of AIR should the AIR resume jurisdiction of their historical line in, in Devon's. Okay? So, that was till now.
Okay.
You guys can figure out where you want.
And I, I would like to keep, stay on the same two boards that I have.
Okay. I am fine taking the vacant positions.
All of them, or you want just one of them, two of them, what do you want? Careful, we'll give them all.
Yeah, I, I wrote down, you know, when they meet, I should be able to make that commitment to all these, so unless anyone else has a, you know, strong desire to pick up something else, I'm, I'm okay taking these three.
Yeah, I'm fine, I'm fine.
But only those three.
Yeah.
Not to exceed.
Okay.
All right, then, I'll make a motion that, oh, could, how do you say your last name?
Tavares.
Tavares, okay. I make a motion that Chris Tavares be assigned to the Executive By Board, Capital Planning Committee, and the Devon's Resolution Committee.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
And chair says aye. All right, so your first meeting for the Devon's Resolution is next week. Okay.
Let me add all those to my calendar.
Okay, so, all right. Sorry if I got us all out of order, just.
No. Good. So on number four, it's that sort of time of year, wanted to just start, no definitive decision obviously has to be made tonight, and sometimes the board, we've taken a couple meetings, is to have an initial discussion on goals for, and objectives for the year ahead. In addition, so these are things in addition to all of the statutory and other requirements that the Select Board has and all of the other things that you do. As we look to the year ahead, are there some things that the board would like to accomplish? It's also helpful, you know, for my goals and, and Carley as well, in the year ahead, what would we like to accomplish? So wanted to just get that discussion started. It doesn't have to get into great detail tonight, or can, and we can continue it to the, to the next meeting. I have a few suggestions as, as well, on some potential.
What are they?
So I think as we look to the year ahead, in addition to everything that we have, obviously, one is the conclusion of the Stormwater Utility Group. I mean, ultimately, the goal of the Stormwater Working Group is to bring, is to bring a recommendation to, to town meeting, and ultimately, town meeting will decide, regardless of that decision. I mean, that's something that's, that is upon us, and that the target is for the fall. The second one is, I think that the Senior Center project, the Site Selection Committee has done a lot of work. Ultimately, they will be coming to you soon with a recommendation on a site, assuming it's a, it's a town-owned site. It takes that piece of the town meeting out, but there will be the financial, the funding piece, and that will also have to go to, to town meeting as well, so that, that's sort of on the horizon. I know something near and dear to the chair, we're due for an update and revision of the board's policies, the Select Board policies. I think we did, I'm trying to remember, I think we're due, that, I mean, that's a smaller assignment, but I, we're due there. So those are some of the, some of the, the projects I, I see on, on the horizon. I think one of the things for Selectman Tavares on the capital front, we just launched the ClearGov budget module, and there's a module on there that can be used for the capital process, so we'll talk about more of that in the fall, which will streamline, I think, the capital process, but also will allow everybody, including the public, to sort of participate almost in real time as that process moves forward. Some other things that are on the horizon, I think I thought of this just before the meeting, and I didn't get a chance to do it, but I will for the next meeting, but we could all do it, is the master plan implementation, so the, in the master plan, there's an implementation plan, that's a 10-year plan that we're coming up, or just about.
That was approved in 17?
17, and so we'll be due for another one, yeah, in 2027, but I forgot to, I think we should take a look on those. We've accomplished the town through its boards and committees and this board, and the departments have accomplished a lot of, of that, but we should check and see if there's some other outstanding projects there that we want to, to look to for the year ahead.
Probably next year, start forming the new committee, so that way there won't be such a big overlap as the last time. It's something we can do in '25, I'm just adding it to the year ahead list.
You know, some other things that have, have come up that are still on the horizon involve other entities, but is also the issue of the elementary school, which I know that the, the school committee and the district, no pun intended, at least drive a big piece of that bus, but they did submit a letter of intent, which has been delayed.
Wasn't it, was it delayed, or, or didn't make this round?
Didn't make this round. I'm thinking, yeah. So, I mean, that's something that, that is out there, out there as well. So just wanted to start the discussion, because it's always a process, we may not have, you know, definitive ones, you know, obviously for tonight, and that wasn't, there's never the expectation, but just to get everybody's gears going. And I'm gonna check, I have a department head meeting next Wednesday, I'll be doing a similar exercise with the department heads. But if you continue to, to think, and then usually by the end of the summer at the latest, we, we've come up with a, come up with a plan.
That sounds good.
And then, if there aren't any questions on that, last but not least, as summer is almost upon us, if we could bottle this weather, as in previous years, the Select Board's summer schedule, for several years, several years, the board has met once in July and August. The board has always been willing to meet extra if needed, if an unforeseen thing, town-sensitive, time-sensitive emergency happens, and appreciate that. And I just put, it's ultimately what the three of you decide, sort of what the past practice has been, the third Tuesday in July, which this year would be July 16th, and the third Tuesday in August, which would this year be August 20th at, at 6:00, just as sort of a guide based on last year, but whatever the board decides in terms of availability. And then we go back to the 1st and 3rd in September.
Those dates, I think, work perfect, because they're regularly scheduled meeting dates anyway, so it doesn't disrupt anything, so.
Yeah. That's worked in the past.
Just give up your Tuesdays, okay?
Just mark it up.
On the few times when you have a Tuesday off, you're like, I feel like I should be someplace.
Feel like that all the time.
No. Yeah, I'm good with those dates.
Yeah, they work for me.
Do you want a motion?
If we need one, yeah.
There's consensus.
There's consensus, yeah.
Okay. So we'll go with July 16th and August 20th at 6:00 PM, and then of course, if we need to, we can, in accordance with the open meeting law, call an additional meeting if needed.
Okay.
Very good.
Madam Chair, that concludes my, and members of the board, my report for this evening.
All right, well, thank you very much. Okay. All right, so under new business, Select Board Member questions, I had put the transfer station study update. So the reason why I added this packet, in the packet, is because, one, I want to make sure that the public is aware that the summary, this is the summary of what the consultant found. So the, first of all, something that we all knew, is that we have a very well-run transfer station. In looking at this, you know, we can see where there'll be some tweaks coming up. No decision is being made tonight, the rate review committee is hot on it. When you're looking at this, when you're comparing like our bag prices and sticker prices to another town, Acton, for example, it's apples and oranges. It can't be a straight one-for-one comparison, because how another town is running their transfer station is different than us. But by that same But by that same token, we're gonna look at how they're doing things to see if maybe we can, you know, do those things in this town, if it helps enhance the experience for the resident. So that's really what I wanted this in here for, is to just make sure that everyone is aware that it is here, and the rate review committee is starting to talk about it, we had a nice meeting last week. What you're seeing in the packet is what I saw last week, so if, Pauline, I know you said earlier in the meeting that there was something missing, I think what this was is a summary of whatever is their big report, but, you know, we'll follow up on that. Okay? So again, there's gonna be, you know, we'll look at, we're gonna look at all the options and everything as far as, you know, like, what can be tweaked to be better. Getting rid of the bags, sadly, just not an option, but we'll have to look at, like, you know, are we pricing things correctly? And that was really a big thing as to, you know, what this is and everything, and then, of course, you know, with recycling, some states are starting to do away with that, and of course, Massachusetts, you know, where the state is authorized, that's it, this is what you're gonna do, but other states are starting to make changes to their recycling program because it's so costly. So that's not something we're gonna be doing, that's not what I'm saying, but I'm just saying that that is part of the reason why some of these prices go up. So, you know, we're gonna look through all this and see what we find, so. Pauline, you had a question?
No, Janice, just a comment. If you will all refer to Page 10, Paragraph 9, Enforcement and Monitoring of Bags, the report specifically references an interim operation plan for the transfer station, parentheses, included as an attachment, which identifies expectations and responsibilities for each employee, including enforcement. So if something is missing from the report, I'm not saying it's you, I'm not saying it's them, but maybe you could inquire and post it.
So again, I don't, I haven't seen anything else in writing, but I can state that as far as that paragraph goes, this has gone to, and you were at the meeting when we were told the black bags were by employees, so it has been recommended that there be an operations change at the transfer station, so that when the employees, custodian, whoever's bringing it to the transfer station, that they bring it to an employee-only section, so that we, the resident, can also see why they have the black bags versus the bags that we have to buy, and hopefully, hopefully, we're gonna find that that's what it was, and not somebody just trying to, you know, slip in a black bag, but that does have to be better enforced, just to double-check, so, but I-
Madam Chair.
I think it's Dan's memo.
It's Dan's memo that's attached to the end of the report.
That he provided to them, and they put it in the report.
Oh, okay, yeah.
That's on Page 21 of the packet.
That's the only interim report, is Dan's.
Okay.
There isn't one from the council.
Okay, so this is what Dan wrote, and somehow how he wrote it is confusing us.
Sure.
Okay. So, yeah, because there's nothing else, because if there was, I would show it to you. So, Pauline, you still have your hand up?
I do, Janice. Dan's memo is dated January, if you look at it?
Yeah, that is, yeah.
And it's recommending some things be done. Tie and Bonds memorandum is, or report is dated May, and in that report, they don't mention anything about employee bags, as we just referenced. I understand that, and I'm not quibbling with that, but Tie and Bond, prepared according to their report, a proposed, physical language part, proposed interim operations plan, and if you don't have it, if the board doesn't have it, if the town manager doesn't have it, I respectfully submit, we paid for it, let's ask for it.
We will get it. If there's something missing, we will get it.
Thank you so much.
Okay. So again, so, but regarding the rest of this summary and everything, like I said, it'll be tweaked, it's all going to be done through the rate review meeting, which is all public, so nothing is being asked of tonight of this board, that will be somewhere in the months to come, whatever the new recommendations are that will be brought to this board. Okay? Any questions from the board?
No, interesting read.
It is, it was, yeah. All right, anybody else have any new business?
Nope.
Okay. All right, then. So we'll go to the meeting minutes. I looked them over, and I had no issues with either one of them?
Neither did I. No edits, no changes.
Yeah, the one that I attended, it all looks fine.
Okay, all right.
Since Chris wasn't here for the first one, I'll do two separate motions. I'll make a motion that the board approve meeting minutes from May 7, 2024, as presented.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the chair says aye.
And then I'll make a motion that the board approve the May 21, 2024 meeting minutes as presented.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. All the meeting minutes are approved.
Just, Madam Chair, for the record, for the first vote, I would, I'm assuming you abstained. Okay, I just want to have that on the record.
All right, so now, and I do this for your benefit, okay? So this is, we do an annual reorg of the board, okay, for our policies, and at this point, you know, historically, we've all made sure that we take a turn, okay? It's moved counterclockwise, clockwise, it's moved in a haphazard way, it doesn't matter, okay? That being said, as you know, the chair, we're all equal, okay? We all have equal input to the agenda, and we all have equal say at the table, as you know. The chair runs the meeting and approves the agenda. The vice chair really doesn't do anything unless the chair isn't there, okay? And the clerk will read specific motions or public hearings throughout, okay? So, you know, when, so, that being said, I know it's been a while since you've been chair, and I think you'd like to be chair.
Yes.
So I will make a motion that Sean be chair of the board going forward.
I will second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the chair says aye to the new chair. All right, so now, on that, since this is your first time, okay, would you like to be vice chair, or would you like to be clerk?
Either is fine with me, so, you know, I was on the Parks Commission chair there, so I kind of understand the process. You know, it's good by me either way, so I would defer to what your judgment is.
I have no judgment. I've been chair, I've been vice chair, I've been clerk, so pick one.
I'd pick vice chair.
Okay, all right, then.
I'll make a motion that Chris Tavares is the new vice chair for the select board.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and I'll be clerk.
Very good. Democratic way. I'll make a motion that Board Member Livingston become the new clerk for the select board.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chair, soon to be clerk, so am I. All right, okay, and unless there's anything else?
No, just one thing that I'm just gonna throw out there, is in, on Friday, I signed up for the newly-elected select board member meeting, yeah, over in Devon's, so I will be there all day Friday. I think that's a good thing to do.
Is it through MMA?
MMA.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah, 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 okay.
I should have said that. Yes, it's put on through MMA, so, I saw that, and I said, hey, learn what I don't know, because there's a lot that I don't know.
It's kind of cool that they're doing it on Devon's, too.
Well, I saw that, and I'm like, well, that's a no-brainer.
Yeah, so, all right, well, if there's nothing else?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Good night, everybody.